Good evening. Thanks for coming tonight. It's kind of an extraordinary meeting. We're going to be in here and then out of here. So I'll bring the meeting to open and then after that, we are going to excuse ourselves to a executive session. It's for a personnel matter, I can tell you that, and that's about all I can tell you. So we'll go do that, then come back as soon as we can, and you have an agenda and we'll take that up and go from there. So, and certainly answer any questions that you've got that we can. So if we would, if we could, please open the meeting with a pledge to the flag.
My pledge to the agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I need to make a motion to go into executive session, please?
I think we have to open the meeting with a roll call.
Okay. Going to have a roll call to open the meeting, please.
Ed Zalany?
Yes.
Lynda Limina?
Here.
Jim Hemingway?
Here.
And John Messidi?
Yes.
Now that the meeting is officially open and we've got the pledge done, I have a motion, please, to move to executive session. I so move.
Second.
Could we do a roll call, please?
Zalany?
Yes.
Limina?
Yes.
Hemingway?
Yes.
And Messidi?
Yes.
So we'll be back as soon as we can. Thank you for your patience.
Appreciate your patience. Do we have to do anything to open, start the public meeting again?
We have to exit executive session.
Okay.
Who made the motion to?
I'll make a motion to exit the session.
Second.
Any action taken?
No.
No. You want to do a roll call on that, please?
Roll call vote, Zalini?
Yes.
Limina?
Yes.
And Hemingway?
Yes.
Macedi.
Believe it or not, I didn't get an agenda in front of me.
Oh, I forgot to get mine, too. Where's that agenda?
Okay. Before we get to the budget discussion, there's a few items that we want to take up. During the last budget workshop, we talked about a couple of things that we needed to get to. One is, we need to get a resolution to adopt the proposed law, local law, number two flood plan, plane plan. Kurt, do you have any information?
It got approved, is how you love it.
That's what I was asking, sorry. Yes, okay. So at this point, I think that we'll take, entertain a motion to vote on the resolution.
So moved.
I'll second.
Darlene, will you do a roll call on that, please?
I will. Zalini?
Yes.
Limina?
Yes.
Hemingway?
Yes.
And Macedi.
So Kurt, is there anything that we need to get to the county at this point, once we've passed this resolution?
You will be getting a form from them.
Okay.
To just be signed and be re-signed.
Okay. And will you contact them so that we get that form, or do I have to contact them?
You will, you will get it automatically.
Oh.
I'll understand from this office.
All right.
You'll get it automatically.
All right, perfect, thank you. Next, we had a discussion, I think I brought up a week ago during the thing about getting the meeting, about getting wireless extended out here. Currently, the wireless belongs to the court. We have a guest connection that we can access, which is very slow. We've had complaints about people in here, even members of the board who want to access documents on their computer. We were given a quote for about $220. I think I've supplied that quote to everyone. I'd like to have a resolution to go ahead and have that accepted, that quote, and get that done in here.
I so moved.
I'll second.
Vote, Zalini?
Any discussion?
Oh.
Thank you. That's what happens when you got a newbie on the board that's supposed to be in charge here, so hang in there. Any discussion on that?
How soon is he going to do it?
The wire's already in here, they just got to activate it. It should be like, as soon as we call him. Okay.
Yes.
Limina?
Yes.
Hemingway?
Yes.
And Macedi.
Yes.
We have another issue that I want to review with the board, and one of the things that was brought to my attention by some of the members of the volunteer fire companies outside of the village, has nothing to do with the village fire company, I want to make sure that we specify that, is concern about adequate fire flow testing relative to the changes that were made, that we've made on the water, and that's another separate issue in terms of where we are with that. I am concerned that without that, with good data and good testing, the board may be in a liability standpoint or danger if we don't have proper documentation of fire flow. We consulted, we did look at what CPL provided us. We consulted with another engineering firm, had them review that, and felt that we needed more testing and more documentation. We really have very little in terms of documentation on fire flow testing. They sent a quote to come out and do nothing but the fire flow testing. The amount of that testing was $2,000, a little over $2,000. I'll get you the exact amount here in a second. I want to have a discussion among the board about whether we want to pursue that. I know that you've not had a chance to talk about it, but I think, my own personal opinion is that I want to make sure that we are not in danger of limiting the fire company's ability to address those fires should they occur. I'd like to open that for discussion before we go further with that.
Have they said, given us a proposal about which hydrants and where they're going to test them?
Well, they would work with Dale on that. They would not just go run out here and do that. Certainly Dale would have to be part of that process. That's from MRB Scott, I think you have a relationship with him or worked with them But certainly that would be up to them as they looked over the situation. They would work with Dale, they would accomplish the testing and provide us the data that I would, you know, hopefully feel comfortable with and that the fire companies would feel comfortable with.
And that testing is two men for a whole day, so I know it might sound like a lot, but there's going to be two people here for the whole day running several different tests around the area, I think. I almost want to say, wasn't it the same places that CPL tested, they were going to go to those same places, or they were going to go to the areas that they felt?
They were going to, I think they were going to work with Dale, and they had ideas where that they felt that the testing needed to be based on what they understood about the system, and they certainly will be, will need Dale's input about where they go and do that testing, so it'll have to be a time that Dale will have to make available also to get that done.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, also do regarding liability for the town, you want to make sure you got enough pressure for fighting fires, so I agree with it.
I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number, do you have that in front of you? Okay, I know it was 2,000, was it an email I provided everybody? They can't access our email because we don't have high-speed internet access, okay. All right. Well, I think I need to get the exact number before we can do a resolution. I would like to...
Should we just say not to exceed $2,500 or $3,000?
I think if... Well, then I'll entertain a motion to do a resolution to authorize MRB to do the fire flow testing not to exceed 2,500.
So moved.
I'll second.
Jim, it's 2,250.
Thank you.
Approximately 2,250, so as long as we're...
We'll just give him, we'll give him because he felt that it would cost less than that. He was kind of quoting a high number, so.
Was it not to exceed 2,500?
2,500.
Vote, Zalini?
Yes.
Limina?
Yes.
Hemingway?
Yes.
And Macedi.
Yes. So the next thing is, to our favorite subject, the budget work, and I know that someone asked recently whether there would be copies of the budget to the public at this point. The budget is still under, you know, a working process here. By tomorrow, the end of the day, we need to have a tentative budget to Darlene, and then within so many days after that, we have to, we can still work on that, we can make changes. Once we move to the next phase and it becomes preliminary, it then is pretty much set in stone that we won't be making any changes on it until it's presented to the public. We will go through a process of notification for a public hearing. At that point, those, that budget will be put online, there will be copies here available when we have the hearing, and the notification, just how many days that has to be in advance of any meeting. So all of that will have to get done here shortly. This budget needs to be finalized and into the county, I think, the second or third week of November, so we're under a short timeframe here to get this done. We spent some time going through this in the last few days since our last meeting, and just as a, we've spent a lot of time on the first part of the budget, which is the A Fund, the B Fund, the DA and DB, just for explanation for everyone. The A Fund is a tax base that includes both inside and outside the village, and that includes stuff that's not in the highway department, but rather other operational costs. The B Fund is based on taxes that are assessed to just the outside the village, so two different funds. The two D budgets, the DA and DB, follow the same tax base. DA is funded by those in the village and out of the village, the DB is funded or supported by taxes on just outside the village. So when we start talking about these things, you kind of understand what part, who pays for this thing, and I think it's important, sometimes forgotten, that 48% of the people at Shelby live within the village, so they have as much interest in this budget as those that are outside. The one area that we have not had a lot of chance to work on at this point, and we may just roll it over, just so you know where we're standing tonight, is water. There have been a lot of changes that have occurred over the last year with water in terms of, we have two separate supplies, two distinctly different cost bases, but there have been issues with the accounting on water for years that have nothing to do with two different supplies. In fact, earlier today, I spent some time going through some old emails back to earlier this year, with the prior board and with some of the other members, there's still costs that they don't know where they're supposed to go, fees, costs, O and M charges, and reading through a series of emails between our accountants, the accounts we had last year of LGSS, our accountants that do the audit, and our attorney, they still couldn't decide where a lot of those fees were to reside. So we have a lot of questions on water yet before we can move ahead a long ways with deciding how to alter the charge that is currently being assessed to people for supply. And so we will be... And so we will be researching that as much as we can once we get this budget in place. So in essence, there's not a lot of changes that we're going to be able to address in the timeframe. And Dale, I know there's a lot of questions that we'll have for you that we'll need information on, like how much water is used from the two different sources over what period of time. And there's a list of questions that we'll need to work with you before we can really address. I know, I know people that are receiving water, that are on the Heartland Water at a lower cost certainly have approached us. And it's certainly getting to be an issue. When is my water rate going to change? But the rules that surround water are, make it difficult to just make decisions one district over the other. Since all of the districts shared in the cost of the putting in the infrastructure for that Heartland supply, how do they benefit? You can't just sell it to the people that are getting Heartland Water today at the lower rate and continue the higher rate at the others. So there needs to be some other adjustments made, and I don't know that we have enough data at this point to make that decision. I think that it's going to be a lot of work. If we had more time, we certainly might have been able to get it by this budget. But in this budget, I think you'll see that pretty much water is going to roll over to what it was. So just thought I'd explain the condition that we're in because I know that that has been a question that I've been asked and I know other people have been asked about. And I think we've received emails asking that same question. I wish I had a ready answer for them. I, as well as anybody, would like to see lower costs for the supply if we can arrange it. But there's, there's a lot of work to be done in that area before we can definitively make rate changes. Any arbitrary change, if we undercut, that we underfund the water districts, then we've got an issue that we didn't charge enough. If we charge too much, it drops too much money to the bottom line and the state doesn't like that either. So this is going to require some real investigation and a lot of questions and a lot of information before we make any move on that. So with all that, I'd like to move to the regular budget. We made some changes to it and we had some discussions. I'd like it open to the board here as we go through this. You each have a copy of the tentative budget that we've put together in total. It's your first page. There's a second page is a final budget for 2025 for comparison. And then you have the breakout for the A Fund, the B Fund, the DA Fund, and the DB Fund. So again, Linda, I think you have done a lot of work on this. Would you like to talk about the changes we've made since our last meeting? Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't ready for, I thought we were doing water tonight.
Well, that's why I spoke to water. I know, do you, do you have, let me back up then. Do you have more to discuss on water from where we are at the moment then for?
I don't have more to discuss other than I think the three questions that we have for Dale that hopefully he can get us some information on in the next couple of weeks. And I don't know if you've shared that with him or will you, can you, can we be sure we get that to him?
Sure.
So that he can, so Dale, what I'm thinking is by water suppliers, so for Royalton and for Medina, how much water did we use? Did each district use or get billed for, for all of '24 and then year-to-date like '25? So we can try to look for a trend to make sure the water usage is staying the same. I know that there was some time when you had a lot of leaks, but I think you said mid-last year or late last year that that got cleaned up? Okay, so we should, so we should be able to kind of look at the usage and see that we should be able to price off of that or cost the expense off of that is what I'm, what I'm thinking for.
2024 was basically 90% village water.
I understand that, but in order for us to go into the budget worksheets and put a cost in by district, we need to know how much each district used so that we can then go into each district and say, here's what we think our expense is going to be.
Easily obtainable, we just have to go through and do the billing.
Okay. Okay, so that would be helpful, I think, for us.
Part of that first quarter will be part of 2024.
Part, oh, the part of, this first quarter in '25, you're saying? Yeah, that's okay, because there's still a 12-month period. Whether they overlap years, it doesn't really matter. It's a 12-month period. So I, so I think water usage by district, by water supply. So how much of that came from Medina and how much of it has come from Royalton?
Can you formulate the questions to him so he knows?
Yeah, actually I put it in that email to us. I thought maybe we, it got shared with him, but we can send him.
No, I didn't take the opportunity to share it with him yet.
We, we'll share the questions. I'm just trying to give him like a heads up as to kind of where we're going.
I'll work with you, Dale, to see what we can do to come up with the numbers.
I don't know that we're going to get anything in time to make a change this year, do you?
Oh, I think this year, absolutely. The expense side? Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, that's like a pretty quick calculation as soon as we know the usage. The other thing, Dale, is, so we have the map, but you'll have to tell us what districts are getting their water from which place. Because I know, I think the village has theirs into one.
And on the last two bills, that's easily done too.
Okay, well, I know the district, the village, I believe, gives us one, they call it one district and we have that broken up into several. And honestly, I just don't, I can't follow it. So if you could let us know that, that way we'll know when we go through and put them on the work, the budget sheets, which ones are, we're getting the Royalton, we can use that cost. And there was one more question. I just don't remember what it was.
What's the amount in non-metered sales?
Oh, yeah. What, last year, we, we budgeted in non-metered water sales. What's, I don't remember. What is non-metered? What would that be?
We had that discussion at that point in time, but I think it meant something to do with the flushing.
Okay.
That is technically metered.
But it doesn't get charged to anybody, right?
Correct.
Okay, so maybe that is what that is. Okay.
Leakage and fire.
Okay. And would you know that, Dale, too, by looking at the bills, how much, so we could see if that number's going down or if it's staying roughly the same? Like when you, when you tell us how much is used, right? But from, like in District One, how much water was used? Would you know how much was billed out to actual end-users and how much was not? So we know what that, okay, so. Okay, yep. That was all I really had on water.
And just for clarification, that will help us with the expense side of water, but it will not help us with the two separate supplies and any alter, and any kind of flat rate?
Correct. It's not a rate, it's not a rate thing. It's an expense thing. The revenue side, but, yeah, that's going to be more challenging.
Okay. So that's going to take a sit-down then, give Dale time to get that. And we should be able to get that hopefully this week so that we can at least get that done in the budget? Okay.
When do you want that, Mike?
We got to have this in as a tentative. Or, no, we got the tentative tomorrow, but we could still work on it from there. I think it's got to be in by week's end. I think the 5th, but 5th is Sunday, so.
By the 5th is when Darlene has to give it back to us.
To us.
Start working on it as a group. I don't think we have a time as to when we make it preliminary. So if we could get it sometime next week or the end of next week at worst.
I'd like to see if we couldn't get it this week to get this further along.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, that'd be ideal.
You think that's possible, Dale?
I guess as soon as possible.
I'll try.
Okay.
I'll work with you, Dale, and see what we can do.
Well, then in terms of the rest of the budget, do you want to go over the rest of it at this point?
Yep, yep. So on, on the A Fund, John, on the A Fund, the second page, second one down says Supervisor Contractual. We had the time clock in there, but we moved it to building, the buildings, because technically the time clock is used by everybody, not the supervisor. So we took it out and moved about $2,500. That's why that number went down. We moved, let's see, Comptroller Contractual. Oh, so that's Single Source. So we took, we took some money out of that and we moved it to water because she's doing a lot of work for water and that really needs to be charged to the water department. And I'm guessing it would be like flat across to everybody, but. So we took about $10,000 out of that and moved it. The Independent Auditor, that's a quote we've already received from the auditors we've retained. So we put that in at 18, based on the quote from them. Assessor Services, we took down a little bit, I think, because it's been running, actually, it's been running very low, so we just, we took that down to 1,000. Assessor Contractual, that number is based on information that we received from the assessor with the salaries for her and her staff over there at Ridgeway, which we split, I think, with Ridgeway and the village, correct?
Yes. And just, just for the record, that included a 3% raise for her and her people. And Ridgeway has already agreed to it.
So we had no say in that 3% raise, pretty much?
Yeah, not really. I guess we could go back and not pay our share of it. I mean.
Attorney, if you keep going down a few more lines, we dropped the attorney fees to 50. I think we discussed that at the last meeting. Engineering. I guess we have to see what anybody thinks about. We were going to talk to Dale. Do you have any idea? Would there be any projects going on that we would be using an engineer that would not be involved in water?
No. We had gone to the, when we needed one, we went and found one. We did not keep one on.
But, so right now, we have $5,000 in the budget in case we hired. Is there any project that you can think of that's not water-related that we might need an engineer for? Like, are you doing any, I don't know, roadwork or something that we would have an engineer for?
I'm on hold on most everything, so, no.
So I guess your appetite, whether you want to leave it in or take it out?
At this point, if we don't have anything, I'd take it out.
Yeah, take it out.
We have a contingency fund in case something does come up.
Yep.
Let's see, Records Management. We increased that. Oh, no, not that one. Records Management is payroll. And I have not looked at Darlene's stuff yet. I'm sorry, Darlene. I haven't got there yet. So I didn't add any changes in for any of that. The Records Management Contractual line, you'll see we went up a couple thousand dollars because we moved the DocuWare software that was in Darlene's budget. It is a records management software, so we moved that into Records Management, which is 1460.4 is the account number. Sorry, I didn't highlight that one for everybody. Whatever, I think, whatever it was times 12. I can't remember the, yeah, yes, yep. Then we get to Buildings. 1620.4. So we moved the DocuWare out of there and we added the time clock in. And unfortunately, I don't have access to my computer, so I can't tell you what else is in there in category other than I believe the utilities are in there, the IT contract is in there. So I don't know what. And then there's a bunch of just little stuff, like from Ace Hardware and, you know, little things like that. So I don't know if there's any room in there to.
I think we went, we went through that pretty good with John's information that he had last week for us.
And we're at 75 right now. And we still have probably three months at least to go.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure I would touch that line.
Not at this point.
Yep.
And now is that where we also added the, because we moved the time clock there?
We moved the time clock there, yep.
We added the money to buy a time clock. Is that not correct?
We did not add the money to buy it. We talked about that, but we didn't, so.
I think we're waiting for a quote on that.
Yep, so, so we've been approached by Single Source to, that she's been talking to the payroll company. And we can buy a time clock for roughly $3,000, give or take a little bit. And we're paying $200 a month to rent one. So in a year, we're spending $2,400 when we could buy it. And in 15 months, we've paid for it and then it's kind of free after that. There would still be a monthly charge per employee for use of it. But I think we probably pay that now. So I'm not 100% on that, though. But it would be a much smaller amount. So it seems reasonable that we would buy it and not.
Once we get the quote on that, we can make the adjustment here, but it made sense to me.
So that, that adjustment would, would add a few hundred dollars into that line. Because right now, it's just sitting with the rental of the time clock. We have to look at the central storeroom. That's like supplies for everybody. Something clearly is wrong with the year-to-date 2025 numbers because we've bought more than $144 worth of office supplies.
I think we saw some of that was going into building contractual.
I'll have to look.
We'll have to go back and take a look at that.
Darlene, that would be mostly Staples?
It would be, well, Staples, or if we stay with the Amazon, it would either be Staples or Amazon, but I know with Staples, we have that New York State contract that they can give it to us for the lower price. Like I said earlier, the reason I had to go on the Amazon was my toner was the only reason that I couldn't get it with the New York State bid. But I would be able to call them and just ask if they could possibly get it for me. It might not be New York State bid, but it would at least be the toner that I would use. So.
Let's see, trying to find them. Traffic Control Contractual, Dale, looks like maybe signs, some cones or something. We budgeted 5,000, but we've only used 900. Do you think we could take that down to like 1,500?
Again, since we didn't have any books, usually at the end of the year, we do inventory and get it up great as cones and signs and signposts. Usually we take inventory, you know, in the next couple months and get what we need for the winter.
It looks like in '23, we didn't spend anything. In '24, we spent 116. This year, we're at 900, but it's up to you, you know. We took it to 15. If anybody has, just so you know, that's a change. If you guys want to come back and discuss that or.
Well, looking at the usage over the '23 and '24 axles, when there was zero and 116, 922, we had 5,000 and they've used 1,000. I think 1,500 is more than adequate at this point. If we see that go up and that we need to add money in the following budget, that's something we can see. But right now, the axles don't support going any higher than that.
Down a few more lines, Highway Superintendent Contractual, which is 5010.4. four. We dropped that by a thousand. It was thirty-five, and we took it to twenty-five. We've been, we were, we were at twenty-seven hundred in twenty-three, twenty-two hundred in twenty-four. We're at twenty-five hundred right now. I don't know what's in there. Do you, by any chance, off the top of your head, Highway Contractual, fifty-eighth, fifty-ten? Okay.
And there's a bill for six hundred dollars, and I had to use my credit card last week.
And do you, do you normally go, do you have plans for five thousand? Is that, like, if you look at the conferences or whatever you're going to, is that, do we need...
They've been escalating and going by what other superintendents put in because of the upward cost of these, um, functions, tools.
I think I brought this up last time. I'd really like to see the money for, for the schools and for any of these things go into, rather than being an outright, uh, budget line, be moved to a contingency fund, and then we get, the board has, uh... They get approached by the person that wants to go to the schooling. It gets explained, and then the board has approval for the funds. That allows us the, the, the ability to see where we are financially and whether it's something, um, that we want to approve. Any thoughts on that?
That's the twenty-five hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Or it sounds to me that you have to raise the twenty-five hundred to about three thousand or thirty-five hundred.
Do you go to the same general once every year, Dale? Like, so we would kind of have an understanding of what they were, what they cost? I guess, can we, can we get both from you and Darlene, like, for yours too, Darlene, just so we have an idea of what schools and what the price of the... And I know it might go up some from what it was this year.
Mine, mine depend on where it's held. Um, sometimes they're held in Albany, um...
Do they know, though, for next year where they're held yet?
We do, we do know.
Okay.
We're always told that at the last conference where the next one will be held.
Same for you, Dale? Is that the same for you? Do they tell you where the...
They tell you where it's gonna be. They just don't have any idea what the cost will be.
I would have...
See, that's why I'm saying, I'd like to have the board ability to take a look at it and say, let's say it comes up and next year, it's in Manhattan, like that training is, that, that you guys took, you know, a couple of years ago. That's now being held in Manhattan. I got the invitation. Obviously, I'm not gonna go to Manhattan at the five hundred dollars a night, or whatever it is for the hotel rooms. I think that who, since we don't know locations...
Who uses?
Since we don't know locations, I'd like to see that on an approval basis. I mean...
That's fine. We just, uh, we would go back to our contingency line, then, nineteen-ninety?
And I have no problem putting enough money in there to support that.
And put it in there.
Yeah.
Can you get continuing education credits for that, Dale, or is this...
I know with mine, they usually say you add like, um, three or four percent. It's just a guesstimate to help you get ready, but, um, you just really don't know the true amount yet, but they give you a, kind of like, an idea how to go about guessing where you're gonna probably be to get that, go to that school.
So do they tell you every year, like, what they're, so this year, you know what they covered? Will they cover the same things next year, or do they cover different things? And maybe the contingency is not such a bad idea, because depending on what they're covering, you might not go.
In the clerks, um, there's, uh, different things you can choose from, so you're not all taking the same class. Um, there might be one on vital statistics, uh, records management, Association of Towns. The attorneys are always there.
Yeah.
Uh, Lori, Miss DeMasi, and Katie Hoggden are always there, big supporters of the Clerks Conference, um, and Tax Collector Conference also. Um, in the tax collection, we learn about fraud, um, um, you know, money, um, for, um, the money that's not good. Counterfeit, that's it. Counterfeit money and, um, oh, just different. We talk about assessments. We learn about assessments, and, and it's kind of a really good thing. You learn a lot, so, um, and like the clerks, you learn more about like the hunting licenses with what's coming out, and, um, you know, it's very informative, I think. I would, I would hate to say I can't go to a class, because they are very informative, but that's that.
And my, and, go ahead, Jim.
Do you have, you feel that you get value from it?
Yes, I do.
And you learn?
I do learn a lot from the class, classes.
And my point is not, not to deny that these, uh, that they should go to these things. My point is simply, uh, we don't know the costs associated with it. Uh, we should have some say, especially if they've moved it to some location. Like I say, the training that I wanted to go to was in Rochester, was in Rochester when you did it, um, and it's now in Manhattan. Um, not that that's gonna happen again to some other class, but I don't think, I feel comfortable just saying, okay, we'll give you some money and you'll go. Now, we can't put enough money in the budget, I suppose, to support that, but, uh, I don't think it hurts to have, uh, um, you know, if somebody wants to go to something, present it to us, show us what the, uh, is on the agenda, what the cost is gonna be, so we really know, and then, uh, we get a chance to approve it or not and approve the cost. I just, given where we are financially, I'd like to have some more control over those kinds of things.
These meetings, uh, annual meetings, I mean, they'd happen every year, with the highway and the clerk?
Yes, I go to, actually, a Town Clerks, it's New York State Town Clerks Association, and then the New York State, uh, Tax, um, Receiver and Collectors.
Uh, it's my opinion, I think, like, uh, Jim said, our financial situation. I think we ought to skip anything next year and then review it the year after. We got a situation, we may have to raise taxes, which I, I don't want to do, so we gotta cut anywhere we can.
Well, I think by moving it in the contingency, it allows us to approve those without just coming out and saying you can't go. That's my...
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we don't know what our financial situation's gonna be, so...
There was a contingency also, I mean, adds to the taxes, doesn't it, if you gotta add the money?
Well, what I would do is just take the amount of money that you might leave in the schooling and just put it in there. So add another fifty, you know, make it fifty-three, fifty, you know, add the money that you think you might do, and then, you're right, it does add, every time you put it in there, it adds to the taxes. You're absolutely right. I think that's one thing that, for people that try to understand this, and it's been difficult, certainly for, for some of us when we're, the budget isn't cash. The budget is what you put together to support the operations of the town, supported by cash that's invested someplace else. When we set a budget, even if we don't spend the money that's in, that we've assigned in the budget, residents have been charged, have been taxed based on what we put in the budget. So it doesn't roll over to the next year and we save money. You've already paid in your taxes for whatever we set in the budget.
Correct, but if you, I just want to make sure people aren't confused. If we don't, if it goes, if it's in a contingency and we don't use it, the money stays in a savings account technically, which is what they say fund balance, but it's, but it, it does stay in a savings, and if we, we can use it then towards the purchase of, the purchase of a truck in four years, or a mower, or whatever it is that we need, that then hopefully, we are not having to go out and tax people in a huge amount.
Later on.
Because we've built up something where, you know, we, we, we do need to be careful. While we try to cut as much as we can, we do need to be careful not to cut too much, 'cause if we cut too much and we hamstring our ability to run the town, that's not good either. So it is a balancing act, and I think that, you know, that's the struggles that we're having, but we do need to be aware that prices, costs have gone up, so we might have to add.
I just, I just, I think that, though, that people don't always understand, I'll say that I had a discussion with someone here who's not here in the meeting, but, uh, who thought we had seventy-five hundred dollars in for demolition, that we've had in year after year. We've never used it. And so the idea was, well, you can just roll it over and you save the seventy-five hundred, but in fact, we've taxed based on that seventy-five hundred every year, even though we don't use it. So it's important, when we come up with these numbers, not only do we have to support the operations, but we have to make sure that we're not putting money in, or putting things in these funds, uh, that we know that most likely are not gonna be used and charging people for it.
Okay, and on the last page, um, the second from the top, the Cemetery Personnel. I guess we're gonna kind of lean to, look to Dale to see if he, if that's still a solid number at sixteen thousand. Something we've, we, you were gonna go back, I think, and hopefully you'll be able to have that in the next couple of weeks for the salaries. We thought maybe something was not charged correctly, 'cause this is saying that only six hundred dollars of salaries was charged, so I think there was an issue with the payroll. Yeah, I, I know. Yeah, you don't have them at all, or you don't have them, you just haven't got... What happens to them?
I get them to Mark, I used to get them to Margaret, and then I keep them in my file,
but I only had a couple of weeks of them, right? I think two weeks of them, two, four, well, a month now.
I've given them to somebody since first year.
Oh, not me.
I sent them to somebody.
Okay, yeah, I've only got them in the last month, maybe. I think I've sent them to Margaret twice.
So...
So I've got four.
Well, Mike, if I remember correctly, back prior to last year's budget, in the budget in previous years, that ran about eight thousand, and my understanding, and some of the discussions that I attended here on the board, was a lot of that went towards the labor to reset headstones.
That was my goal and intention, but, um, we were unable to accomplish it.
But I think we increased it in the twenty-five budget from around eight thousand to sixteen, because you had more aggressive plans to do more. So you could still do some of that, even if we reduced it to eight thousand, and that would be my idea to move it to eight thousand from sixteen, and Dale will do what he can. I think we have to support the cemeteries. I like the idea that we're, you know, keeping it up for the folks out there, but I think we could, you know, reduce that, and he'd still, uh, get some work done. We just could drop it down some to where it was.
Reduce it to ten? Because look at, in twenty-four, you were at eighty-nine.
I'm, I'm fine with reducing it by the ten. I'm okay.
Okay, so we'll take six out, but then that, that six thousand dollars, Dale, that you have to allocate somewhere else, right? Because your labor hours are set, right? They're gonna work two thousand, so we're, if we're gonna take six thousand out of the labor hours for cemetery, that means six thousand has to go in another point one somewhere for you.
Probably the fifty-one, ten, one hundred.
Uh, which fund is that?
Fifty-one, ten, one hundred?
Yep.
Meaning the roads?
Okay. All right, and then Cemetery Contractual, um, we increased that by the forty-three thousand that we took out of, um, Brush and Weed, so that all the cemetery charges are in one line. And that was like forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, or something like that. And then I did not do anything at all with, um, Social Security or any of that, uh, State Retirement, Workers' Comp. I did not look at any of that. John, are you making progress on the retirement?
No, still treading water.
Well, you're working on it.
Yes, I'm working on it. Gotta get the code.
Did, did we ever get the, the bill for the engineering for that bridge? That's, uh, oh...
Ten thousand, it's under economic development?
Yeah, yeah.
We did.
Right, is that what it was, ten thousand? What was the bill, our total bill on engineering?
It's the last payment on that, the last year.
Twenty-six, twenty-six is the last year?
Year or twenty-five was the last year?
Twenty-six is the last year. We have to budget for it, but I think it's the final payment on that.
And then I think, John, what's the amount we give the IDA? Is it twenty-five hundred? Normally, every year?
Normally.
Okay. So there might be a little given that, depending on what that last engineering charge is.
Yeah. That's fine.
All right, so on the B Fund. Uh, we took out the demolition, building demolition.
Yep.
We took out the constables. They're, they're in the court line. On page two. Oh, I have a note by garbage to, to find out what they charge us per month. I just didn't get in to look at it. So I'll look at that and see what that twenty-five hundred is, because again, this year, we only have a hundred and eighty-one dollars in there. Clearly, something's not right there, 'cause I'm sure they're charging us more than a hundred and eighty-two dollars. So I'll, I'll look at that. And then I did not touch any of the payroll-related items, so those still have to be looked at.
What's this inter-fund transfer there? Okay, zero, eight.
Oh, yeah, we did take that out. So there was an inter-fund transfer between the B Fund and the DB Fund last year, um, which... Which I did get a ruling, I think I sent that to you, I think I sent it to everybody. I did get a ruling from New York State that you cannot move money between the B, like B and DB, or A and DA, even though they're the same tax base, you still can not do that. It has to be paid back. Um, only when you transfer B outside of the same tax base, then you have to charge interest on that money. You have to pay interest back, but you can't just move money from like B to DB, according to the State Comptroller, which I think I sent out to everybody. If anybody has any questions, we can. So we probably should look at that. We might have to move that back. We took it out. We took it out for this, for twenty-twenty-six.
Right.
But we have to look, and I'm not sure we actually did the move. It might have just been on, you know, in the budget, but if we did not physically move that money, we probably should not do that.
I'm not sure. I think that we, well, I looked at the budget, and yes, we may have to have some questions on that, but I don't know about the actual move of the money. We'll have to go back and...
Yes.
Um, the Waste Management Bill we got today, it's two, that, two hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty cents a month.
Okay, hold on. Two sixteen, thirty?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make that change. Okay, DA. Um... Machinery and Equipment, we took out the hundred thousand, 'cause this, what we spent this year, the ninety-seven, was for the twenty-twenty-six truck, so we took out that hundred thousand. We took out, we did originally have a reserve in here of fifty, but at the last meeting, I think we talked about taking that out, so I did remove that.
And that was to be for the other, the contingency was not so much to build up a reserve. We were gonna put a reserve in the, when we talked about it, for future purchases, but I think in the last discussion, we took it out because of where we are financially.
And the fact that we have two, two, two brand-new trucks, so hopefully, we wouldn't be looking for a new truck in the foreseeable future. So we might have a year to get ourselves figured out here and then start, and start putting some money aside. Machinery Contractual, fifty-one, thirty point four. We took that down to sixty. We took out forty thousand of that. We took that down to sixty. We took out forty thousand of that. We spent eighteen, and you can see eighteen, little, nineteen thousand in twenty-twenty-three. We were about sixty thousand in twenty-four. We're at fifty-one right now. So we put that at sixty.
What's that for repairs, Dale?
Yes.
I think the logic there was the fact that with two new trucks, because we have a twenty-five and a twenty-six, with two new trucks, hopefully the repairs.
No, they're under warranty anyway, so you shouldn't cost you anything.
We don't have the older ones that we're gonna be having to repair. And did we decide what we're doing with the, the, the older trucks? How many, Dale, how many trucks did you say we have, including the two new ones? How many do we have?
Six.
And those are ten wheels? Ten, ten-wheelers?
Five.
Okay.
We had four originally, and then the six-wheeler, right?
No, we had four plus the single.
Right, six-wheelers. So that's five plus two new trucks. That's seven trucks.
But I suppose we'll sell and auction the cab and chassis.
Okay, so that's, I guess where I'm going. So we're, we're gonna end up with an extra that we're, you're gonna try to sell at some point, okay?
And we'll.
So we'll keep five.
So we, so we bought two and you're gonna get rid of one. Can we get rid of two, or is it, do you need to have that, that many trucks? I, I'm just asking. I don't know, we're, you know.
I would rather not. Four flower routes, four trucks and a spare is, is needed. One, the old truck, the oldest one, it's going on twenty-six years old. We're not gonna suit up. That's gonna be for storms, for tree limb, work that we can do on a good winter day.
What do you think you can get for the cab and chassis of the one you mentioned?
It's not a highly sought-after year.
Okay.
I would say, just a guess.
Yeah.
Twenty.
Okay.
In what year is that one, Dale, that you're talking about selling?
Oh, eight.
Okay. Okay. Okay, brush and weed contractual. We dropped that by forty-three thousand and change, somewhere around there, forty-three, two sixty or something like that, because we moved that to cemetery and the A fund. I think that's all we did in this one. And then in DB, maintenance of roads, fifty-one, ten point four. We dropped that by fifty. We left the chips the same. Dale, did you get any information? There were supposed to be some chips talk at your conference. Was there anything discussed on what they thought was gonna happen with chips?
They didn't allude to any changes.
But historically, there haven't been cutbacks.
That would be correct.
Fair statement.
So, so the other thing that I, we talked about a little at the last meeting was, so at the village, they get like one point two million in chips money and.
State touring route.
Correct, but they.
They do not give that.
Understood, but they told me that they thought that was about four hundred and thirty thousand. So that still takes them to eight hundred thousand of chips money for twenty-six miles of roads. Why, why would they be getting so much more?
You'll have to call the state. I, I have no idea how they, how they do that. That number seems a little high, but I can't imagine.
All right, and then the, the reserve that was in there for two hundred and twenty-five thousand last year, we took that out.
Was that a contingency fund?
I have no idea why that got put in. That, that amount got put in shortly before we voted on the budget. And I have not a clue what that was for.
It was a first-time addition.
But we didn't use it, so apparently we didn't need it, so I think we should, that.
Obviously, take it out.
Yep. Any questions on any of that so far? Nope. All right, I wanna go back, if we could, to the DA fund. So I gave, I left this in front of you, John and, and Jim. There's no name, there's no title to it. I just did some quick calculation. So what I did was I went and I looked at the assessed values for the town. So there's, there's three hundred and two million, two twenty-five total for the town of Shelby. A hundred and seventy-nine million, four forty-eight is outside the village. A hundred and twenty-two, seven seventy-six is inside the village. The village, a hundred and twenty-two million makes up forty percent of the total assessed value. Sixty percent is for the outside town. If you look at the total expenses that are on the budget for the A, B, DA and DB funds, it comes to two million, a hundred and twenty-one thousand. Sixty-six percent of that, or one point four million, sixty, sixty-six percent of the total, which is one point four million, is being contributed.
Contributed.
The, the, inside, the village residents, the taxpayers in the village of Medina are contributing to one point four million dollars of the total town expenses. That's sixty-six percent of the total town expenses. If you, if you look at, I gave you another sheet, which is, which quotes, has the highway town law two seventy-seven, and also a recommendation or a description from the state comptroller's office. And it talks about the fact that maintenance and repairs of roads must be charged to the DB fund. So I'm gonna ask the question again this year. If the, if the highway, the roads themselves and the maintenance of those roads is charged to the outside fund, the DB fund, why would the snow plowing not follow the maintenance of the roads? And I'm not looking for an answer tonight. I just wanna kind of, I, I know I dropped this on everybody today. So I'd like you, if we could just kind of simmer that over and maybe talk about it at the next meeting. But I just wanted to give you some breakout.
I think there, the last time this was brought up, last year, it certainly resulted in some discussions.
And Jim, I'm sorry, Jim's right. There's forty-eight percent of the
Population.
Population of the town of Shelby. So, so this board also has to represent Village of Medina taxpayers.
It's a, it's a, it's a hard discussion to have because it's been this way so long. It is not mandated by the state. It's the one element that is not mandated on the state in terms of highway. So much of the highway is mandated to outside. But snow plowing is up to the board, is up to the, and quite frankly, up to the community. As Linda says, the forty-eight percent of the people are contributing to sixty-six percent of the budget. And I've heard from town residents and I've heard from outside. Again, I lived outside much longer than I've lived in town. And I still own property out there. It's not a house, but it's property I pay taxes on. Certainly sensitive to both sides of the subject. Village people will say they don't see a truck ever in the village, a Shelby truck. And the village pays a hundred percent of the snow plowing in the village. And people outside will say, well, you use our roads outside. And the people in the village will say, you come through the village, your kids go to school. You don't pay anything towards the snow plowing here. So there is strong feelings on both sides of the subject. As Linda said, we're here to represent both sides of this. And we need to represent the forty-eight percent as well as the fifty-two percent. Quite frankly, a budget was discussed last year that I have records of, that I go back, I was not on the board at this time, where there was an attempt to move the snow plowing and actually with that, before some of the other elements were added at the last minute to purchase equipment. Moving the snow plowing, there is a budget that was agreed upon before it came out in public, would actually would have lowered the taxes for the people outside, even by moving the snow plowing. And there's a lot of other discussions that we're gonna have in the future here about services that the village pays for that are funded a hundred percent by the village, such as the ambulance. We contribute to the town of Shelby, thirty-five thousand, which doesn't do much. These are gonna be hard discussions, not only about the snow plowing, but other emergency services. Everyone in this room and everybody listening, in Shelby, outside, in Ridgeway, wants to have an ambulance when it's, when it's called. And in the eastern part of this county, they've had to make those decisions and they've opted to contract that out, and their bills are much higher for the town, the towns on the eastern side for a much less service. So snow plowing is one of those elements that I think as a board, we're gonna have to, and as a community, have to decide what's fair, what gets charged where. So, and one of the things I don't think that a lot of people realize, and I've heard it from some people that live outside, we get tax money, the town of Shelby gets an income from the businesses that relied, rely, that lie in, in Maple Ridge Road. I've heard people say, well, the town doesn't get anything. School gets most of it, when you talk about take form and the other businesses are there. But it's important to remember that those businesses would not be there paying taxes to anybody if there wasn't a wastewater treatment plant that resides in the village, that the village pays a hundred percent of, and the town of Shelby contributes nothing. Now, those businesses pay towards that, don't get me wrong. But they contribute taxes to the town of Shelby, and we plow the road, but other than that, there's not a lot we do for it. Like I say, the, and many people don't realize that. They think the village gets all the tax off those businesses, and that's not the way it is. So I think the snow plowing is part of a consideration about what is fair, and I think it's a good point that you raise, and I think there needs to be further discussion, and I'd love to hear more from people on that one.
I, I just wanna clarify one thing. So I also went through on your sheet that I gave you, and I showed if the snow plowing costs were moved, you now have a fifty-fifty split, whereas the village residents, village taxpayers, I should say, the village taxpayers would be contributing towards fifty percent of the town's expenses. So it does drop it more to a fifty-fifty split. I do wanna comment too, Jim, about the, the taxes from the, the businesses. I think there was some confusion last year about the amount of taxes that are collected and what the village takes versus what Shelby gets. So the only reason the village is getting more tax money off of the businesses that are out on the Maple Ridge corridor is because the village's tax rate is fourteen dollars. There is not a pool of money. Those businesses do not have, they're not putting a pool of money out there and the village is taking, you know, you know, seventy-five percent of it. The village portion of those taxes is because their rate is fourteen dollars a thousand. Shelby's rate is four dollars. So if Shelby wants the same thing, they can raise their taxes to fourteen dollars, and those businesses will pay Shelby the same amount they're paying the village. But it, the, the village is not taking more money than, than their fair share. They're just taking what the tax, what their tax rate allows them to have. So I think there was some misconception about that, and I just wanna make sure everybody's clear.
Well, I think it's certainly worth a discussion at our next meeting, which we're gonna have to have before too long, so. At this point, what we've done with the budget, we've not moved the plowing, just so that everyone understands.
Yeah.
It's under consideration, and I think it needs to be examined.
So my, my hope would be that we'll get some water numbers in the next week or so, and we can make some adjustments to the water for the cost that we're paying. And we can tighten up the benefit stuff, right? I did see, I did see a paper from the Independent Health telling us what the rates are gonna be for next year, so I can update that.
I think we have a meeting with Tompkins on some of the health insurance costs for next year. That's tomorrow morning at eleven.
Okay.
So John will be for there for that one. We also got the numbers from the fire departments, Shelby and East Shelby.
I only have one, I only have Shelby in, so I can add, yep, I can add the other one.
Yep. And by the way, that's contractual to the, this is the, I guess twenty-six is the last year, this is the last year. It's a three-year with a agreement with the two fire companies. And it goes up, I think, about by three percent every year, whatever, but this is the last year for that. So we just got the numbers for that today. So we'll put that into the budget and that'll. And are there other numbers that we need? I don't, there's, there's, we still have revenue numbers that we need.
Correct. We're still trying to nail down where some of the revenue numbers are coming from, so that we can be sure we're putting in good numbers. Also, we need to be aware of the, I'm not sure at what point we can calculate the tax cap, but we should do that to see if we're close or not.
Yeah.
And then Kathy would know, I think, when we have to vote on going over the tax cap if we had to.
Yeah.
But there's a deadline for that, I think, so.
Yeah, I think I just got an email yesterday or today for that one, along with a hundred others. John, do you have anything at this point?
No, I'm more confused.
Add, any comment?
Uh, no, I'm good right now. Thank you.
Linda?
Can I just comment about the amount roughly that we've taken out?
Sure, absolutely.
So I just wanna, I just wanna say that while it's not final,
last year's budget was showing four million, thirty-seven thousand dollars of expenditures. And again, we have some fine tuning to do, but right now, we're sitting somewhere a little north of three million. So we've done a lot of work to cut close to, a little bit more than a million dollars out of this budget. So people might still not be happy with where they end up, but it's, it could have been a lot worse. So, you know, bear with us and give us a chance to, to keep tweaking it. I know people are excited to see it, John. But, but yeah, we've taken, we've taken a little over a million dollars out, and hopefully we can stay there.
And I think that it's important to understand that, that some of the, what's happened in the past, not to go back and argue, but some of the reserve funds were especially used. And all towns keep some reserve for emergencies. And for those that look at their tax bills, they'll see like last year and outside, taxes went up, property taxes from the town went up about six percent. But the fire went down. Well, why did the fire go down, since we're on a contractual obligation to pay so much every year? Went down because they took reserve funds and put it towards the fire. Went down because they took reserve funds and put it towards the fire. Unfortunately, we've reused a lot of reserve funds if we have to. There's still enough for us to go back and still function, but we would really love to get this to a balanced budget. Uh, and that's our goal. So, there's more work to be done. It's, uh, uh, another few hours to put into this. So we will get this done as soon as we can, so that we can get it into the hands of the public, um, so that you get a chance to question us on what we've done. So. With that, uh, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Yeah.
We don't, you wanna open it to questions?
Yeah.
Sure, okay. Typically, we don't, but we can. Anybody have questions? Mr. Wambach?
This may have been covered before. I just can't remember. When you guys figure out what it actually costs to provide water to people, when you've taken the two different sources and so forth, and then you look at the different districts, is it the goal of Shelby to charge people in each district based on the cost for their district? Or is it gonna be one cost that's shared for everybody? And the reason I brought this up is because a neighbor said, "Well, I know that some areas where the pipe that was put in was PVC, and it was put in on gravel and leaks were caused because there was a bad bed. And so, should the people in that area have to pay more because there was damage in their, their area that wasn't their fault?" So this one person's opinion was, everybody should share the costs. And, there ought to be some plan for what you do when there was bad construction that caused it to happen in the first place. So, back to my original question, how are we planning to do the costs for the different districts?
Well,
I, I think, uh, we discussed this here, hmm, what was it, last summer? Regarding making the town all one district?
Oh, good.
But, uh, it's gonna take, uh, you know...
Some time.
Yeah, design how to do it and stuff. I mean, uh, where it's, right now, it's just, uh, trying to get the water evenly distributed, price-wise, so.
So, could I interpret what you said? I understand it isn't one district now. That what you're saying is people will be charged based on the use in their district? Is that what you're saying?
You want me to?
If you got, I got an answer, but you go right ahead. Take a shot at it.
So we, we have been in a discussion with our attorney to determine whether legally we can get a, um, blended rate.
Okay.
And, and if legally that's available to us, we will pursue that option, I think. Right? There's, there's no, there's no appetite by this board to charge one person a higher rate than somebody else, when the water is, you know, all kinda coming from the same place, so. But we first need to know if legally we can do a blended rate.
And I couldn't remember a resolution to this before, so I just wondered. Thank you very much.
One thing I was gonna talk about.
Sure.
Did we get our information from LGS at the last meeting, remember? You were trying to get a hold of them?
Uh, they did a data, they did a huge data dump that I had to go. It was a, it was a twenty-four hour. We had a chance to go and data dump all their stuff. Uh, I got that done. We've dumped it. Um, it's a lot, and we'll have to get, go through it. So, uh, yes, we did finally, I think, till we get a really good chance to look at it, I think we got everything that they, they, they accomplished.
So we paid this company all this money, and now they're just dumping this on us?
They gave us reports. They gave us all the reports-
Right.
-that they would give us for a year-end. We have all the normal reporting that we should, we, we should have gotten.
I think because they were big files, they did it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's done. We have it in-house. Uh, I haven't had a chance to open it up and, and take a look at it, certainly.[1474.82][1474.82](laughing) Yeah, I know it. Yeah, I, I think that what, what, a little bit, to expand a little bit on your, your water issue, the rules from the state are pretty strict about what you do with water. So when you talk about the two different, um, costs of water coming in, you say, "Well, just those districts that are getting the co-, you know, the cheaper water should get that." Well, the funding for putting that in place and, and the work that was done to, to make that connection went on all of the fire district, all of the water districts. Therefore, they have every right to receive a discount on that. Certainly, the goal would be at some point to move to, it would make everybody's job a, a lot better if we could go to a single district. And I can tell you, in some cases, like the town of Murray, they're so sick and tired of handling water, that they're ready and getting close to signing a contract with Monroe Water and saying, "We have seventeen water districts. Will you please take these off our hands?" They will bill it, they will service it, and they take over the whole thing. And I, other, other townships along the border with Monroe County have actually already taken advantage of that program. Unfortunately, we don't have that. You know, we've got a highway department that takes care of water, which is, is double duty in some ways. It's, it's, you know, uh, the billing is sometimes complicated, uh, by these issues. And certainly by the rules that, that are in place about what we can do. You can't move money from one water district to another. And there hasn't been, not only in the case of Shelby, certainly in the case of the village, there hasn't been a lot of forward thinking about what we do. Now, all of the water districts at this point, except one, have debt that they're still paying on, and are gonna pay for some time. Uh, the only one that doesn't is, uh, the first line that was put in to, to service Shelby Center. And I think Dale can tell you that his guys don't wanna get near the pipe. It's old, the type of pipe that it is. And there really hasn't been any money put away to make that replacement when it comes due. Uh, that's, was done in the early seventies, if I, if I remember right. So, one of the things we talked about was then we're supposed to get information on. There is advice, there are companies that, that their whole goal is, is fiscal advice for water and water development. Uh, it's not only looking at what you have now, but making suggestions on things like maybe a single district, maybe how we, we bill for it, how we manage it. How do we save for the future, given the status of where we are? That'll cost too. We'll, we'll look into that, and maybe we'll have somebody be able to help us. This discussion on water's been going on for years. We do charge, we have an up-charge on, on this. Not always clear where those up-charges have been saved to. So, there's a lot to the water element that, that we'll be, be working on in the future. Okay?
I, I would just like to add, typically, towns and villages or counties have a water authority, which is at arm's length from the town, and it's essentially a profit center where they get the money, make sure they have enough for repairs and whatever profits they get. There's a board that can send that money back to the town or villages, so. I think ultimately, that's where we wanna be, but how we get there is unknown. It's more of a legal question than anything, so.
We're not trying to spend a lot of money on legal right now, so. Any other questions or comments before we all get out of here? Okay. All right, could I now have a motion to close the meeting?
I move.
Volcarvo Zalini?
Yes.
Limina?
Yes.
Hemmenway?
Yes.
And Messidi?
I was gonna say no, but I'll say yes.[1760.74][1760.74](laughing)
And just as, I, I do appreciate people showing up and showing an interest, uh, with, you know, people up here are doing this for you, and then, then that you're here to, and if, if you're still on YouTube and people are still watching, um, you know, stay tuned. Uh, it's, the, the government works the best when you stay interested. This will be as open as we possibly can be in one meeting to the next. You're not always gonna agree with us. But we do wanna do the best we can for you, and thanks for coming.
Meeting's adjourned.
Meeting's adjourned.